For our Cottonwoods Maintenance District. So I'm going to call this to order. Roll call, please.
Chairman Fedel.
Present.
Vice Chair Larrabee.
Present.
Board Member Earl.
Present.
Board Member Calvi Anakis is just, is here but not in the room at the moment. Council, Board Member Watts.
Here.
Board Member McMahon.
Here.
And Board Member Skellicorn. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, so we have consideration and possible action for the approval of the minutes of the Cottonwood Maintenance District from the regular meetings of June 4th, 2024, and June 18th, 2024. I need a motion for approval in a second, please.
I motion for approval.
Second?
Motion and second. Are there any comment cards, Town Clerk? Thank you. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Board Member Skellicorn. Board Member McMahon.
Aye.
Board Member Watts.
Aye.
Board Member Earl.
Aye.
Board Member Calvi Anakis is not in the room yet. Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Larrabee.
Aye.
And Chairman Fedel.
Aye.
Mayor six zero.
Thank you. And I see Paul's on deck, so Paul, you want to go ahead and start your presentation?
Yes, Chairman and Board, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity tonight. This should be pretty brief, hopefully. Tonight is the first of three meetings for the Cottonwoods Maintenance District. This one tonight is discussing the tentative fiscal year 2026 budget for $15,605, which includes landscaping costs on your screen, administrative costs, some miscellaneous supply costs, and contingency. The budget will be accompanied by a tax levy upon the 58 parcels within the district. That raises about $11,606 to support this budget, as well as existing fund balance. And tonight's resolution will direct staff to send out public notice that will be mailed to the residents of the district. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Seeing none, we need a motion to, in a second, please?
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Board Member McMahon.
Aye.
Board Member Skellicorn.
Yes.
Board Member Calvi Anakis is not in the room yet. Board Member Earl.
Aye.
Board Member Watts.
Aye.
Vice Chair Larrabee.
Aye.
And Chairman Fedel.
Aye.
Six zero.
Thank you. And having that been completed, we need to adjourn that meeting, so can I get a motion for adjournment? In a second?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Board Member Skellicorn.
Yes.
Board Member McMahon.
Aye.
Board Member Watts.
Aye.
Board Member Earl.
Aye.
Board Member Calvi Anakis is not in the room. Vice Chair Larrabee.
Aye.
And Vice Chairman Fedel.
Aye.
Six zero.
Thank you. And then I'd like to open a hearing for our second Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District. Roll call, please.
Chair Fedel.
Present.
Vice Chair Larrabee.
Present.
Board Member Earl.
Present.
Board Member Calvi Anakis is not in the room yet. Board Member Watts.
Aye.
Board Member McMahon.
Here.
Board Member Skellicorn.
Okay, and then we need consideration and possible action for the approval of the minutes, so I need a motion and a second, please.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please. I'm sorry, any comment cards before we do the roll call?
No, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Board Member Watts.
Aye.
Board Member McMahon.
Aye.
Board Member Calvi Anakis is not in the room yet. Board Member Earl.
Aye.
Board Member Skellicorn. Vice Mayor Larrabee.
Aye.
And Vice Chairman Fedel.
Aye.
Six zero.
Thank you. And I see Paul's back up again, so we're going to have consider, consideration, possible action on the tentative budget. Go ahead, Paul.
Great, again, thank you Chairman and Board. So this second meeting for Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District is also considering the tentative fiscal year 2026 budget for this special taxing district. We've discussed this in prior council meetings. We've actually expended most of the monies in this fund, and we made the last debt payment back in 2021. So with an existing special taxing district, you are required to adopt a budget, so that's why we're here today. We're adopting a budget for $200, just to meet the public notice requirements, to send out public notice and publish in the newspaper. No tax levy will be levied upon the Eagle Mountain residents. And the only other thing to consider is we will likely recommend closure of this facilities district beginning next year, based on Bond Council and Special Taxing District Council advice. So with that, I'm here for any questions that you have.
Seeing no questions, I would need to have a motion to approve this resolution. In a second?
Move to approve.
Any comment cards, Town Clerk? No, okay. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Board Member Calvi Anakis is not in the room.
Aye.
Aye. Board Member Earl.
Aye.
Board Member McMahon.
Aye.
Board Member Skellicorn.
Yes.
Board Member Watts.
Aye.
Vice Chair Larrabee.
Aye.
And Chair Fedel.
Aye.
Six zero, I mean seven zero.
Thank you. And then that concludes our business with this, so I need a motion and a second for adjournment.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Board Member Watts.
Aye.
Board Member McMahon.
Aye.
Board Member Calvi Anakis.
Aye.
Board Member Earl.
Aye.
Board Member Skellicorn.
Yes.
Vice Chair Larrabee.
Aye.
And Chair Fedel.
Aye.
Seven zero. Mr. Yarian.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing if you choose for the I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And is Vicki Dirksen here tonight?
It's shocking. Mayor, Council, and staff, as we gather in service to Fountain Hills this evening, we acknowledge our shared commitment to this remarkable community. Excuse me. We stand as stewards of a town known not just for its towering fountain, but for its dedication to small-town character and exceptional quality of life. In all the deliberations tonight, may we embody our town's stated core values, which are, and I've abbreviated them for the sake of time, to be stewards of this unique enclave, to champion the diversity of experiences of our residents, to be economically sustainable, and to be civic-minded and friendly. Let tonight's decisions reflect the town's mission statement, which includes providing superior public services, sustaining the public trust through open and responsive government, maintaining the stewardship of our financial and natural resources, and doing it through service, respect, and trust. As the fountain rises, so may we rise to meet the challenges and opportunities before us, with the reasoned judgment and collaborative spirit that true public service demands.
Thank you. Town Clerk, can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Fedel.
Present.
Vice Mayor Larrabee.
Present.
Councilmember Earl.
Present.
Councilmember Calvi Anakis.
Here.
Councilmember Watts.
Present.
Council, Councilmember McMahon.
And Councilmember Skellicorn.
Here.
And Town Clerk, would you please read the Statement of Participation?
Anyone wishing to address the council regarding items listed on the agenda or under the call to the public should fill out a request to comment card located in the back of the council chambers and hand it to the Town Clerk prior to consideration of that item. Once the agenda item has started, late requests to speak cannot be accepted. When your name is called, please approach the podium, speak into the microphone, and state your name and if you are a resident for the public record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. It is a policy of the mayor and the council to not comment on items brought forth under the call to the public. However, staff may be directed to report back to the council at a future date or to schedule items raised for a future agenda item. It is also requested that applause be kept to a minimum to avoid disruption of the meeting, to maintain decorum, and provide for an equal and uninterrupted presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll have reports by Mayor, council members, and Town Manager. Rachel?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you. I just had a couple of quick updates. I wanted to actually just give a few quick acknowledgements. We have two staff that are in the process of retiring. One actually had their last day last week. That was Nan Norton. She's been with us for 20 years here in our courts, so I wanted to wish a special thank you to her. And Gary Baker is going to be wrapping up service with us next week, so he will be retiring as well out of our, he's over in our Public Works and Streets area, so he will be stepping down as well. So we want to wish them both a big farewell and thank you for all their time and service that they've been, and been teammates with us here. The last thing is I wanted to recognize and thank our Fountain Hills Fire Department back there. Those of you, you probably already know that we welcomed our newest resident in front of Town Hall about 3:00 AM the other morning, Wednesday morning. There was, the parents did not make it to the hospital in time, so they pulled over and called 911, and our fire department showed up to help mom and beautiful baby girl to the hospital. Everybody's doing well and healthy, but it was a, quite a surprise, so, but we appreciate their service in getting everybody to the hospital and where they can get checked out and make sure everything was going okay. So, thank you to them and all of the staff for what they do. Those are my updates today.
Thank you. Is the rumor true that they're going to name her Fountain?
I thought it was Jerry. I don't know what her name is, actually. We have asked a couple of times, I'm not sure if we've been able to find out, but I hope it's something, something like that.
Good, thank you. Councilwoman Earl?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, and Fountain Hills. For my council report tonight, I've prepared a brief statement to address recent events transparently while respecting the confidentiality of executive session discussions. As a member of the council, my duty is to oversee the responsible use of public funds. That's why I requested an executive session to review the performance and financial aspects of our contract with our law firm and share my findings. To clarify, the mayor, the town council, as a collective body, as a collective body, are responsible for hiring, firing, and conducting performance reviews of the town attorney, presiding judge.
Councilwoman, can you please keep your comments to events and happenings that you went to in the town?
This was my event in the last two weeks.
I'm sorry, it's, follow the agenda, please.
Are you, are you refusing me to be able to say what I was going to finish saying?
I don't think this is the forum for it.
So are you refusing me to be able to say this?
Please follow the forum.
My forum would be sharing what my experience was the last two weeks.
Events that you went to on behalf of the town, happenings in the town.
Well, I disagree, this is a happening in the town that I, okay, I will end with, can I end with something here, then?
Go ahead.
I want to say that I acknowledge our, I look forward to and acknowledge the decision of the majority of our council to look for a new attorney, and I will work collaboratively during this time. Unfortunately, I was not allowed to share the rest of this, but I do want to commit to the residents that I pledged to remain steadfast in my commitment to honesty and transparency within the bounds of the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Calvi Anakis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Live, live streaming on YouTube, welcome to our Fountain Hills Town Council meeting. Thank you for being here and being engaged in our community. A couple, two councils ago, I mentioned that we needed help with our home-delivered meals program, and there still are a few vacancies that we need. It was brought to my attention by Kim Wicklin that we also need drivers for our Give a Lift program. Now, Give a Lift provides essential medical transportation to Fountain Hills residents that are physically disabled, and so contact Kim Wicklin if you would like to participate. Her phone number is 4-808-165108. Volunteering, the greatest recipient is you because of how good it makes you feel to help people in your community. I'd like to also honor Military Appreciation Month. It's observed through the entire month of May. We honor the service and sacrifices of current and former U.S. members of the Armed Forces and their families. Also, on April 29th was National Fentanyl Awareness Day. This is a day where major corporations, community groups, nonprofits, government agencies, like us, schools, campuses, take action to protect the lives of particularly young people that are dying. The, when the Titanic went down because of the iceberg, we lost 1,500 souls. In the Vietnam War, we lost 58,000 men and women, and every year, 120,000 people die of fentanyl poisoning. This is a national disaster, a national crisis, and so I'd just like to bring awareness to that. Also, this past week, the Fountain Hills Economic Development Manager, as well with the Chamber of Commerce, have partnered for a business retention program, where we go out, we meet business owners and help them get a, get a plan to make their business more successful. I'm on that rotation, and we've been meeting with businesses, and it's a great thing to help the businesses in our community, some of which are struggling. Lastly, on Memorial Day, my band, the Desert Valley Winds Band, is teaming up with Fountain Hills Community Band, and we're going to be playing at Memorial Day at 2:45. Patriotic hymnal-type music. We'll have a speaker narrate the significance of Memorial Day, and we will play taps at 3 o'clock. So the public is all invited, if you'd like to come join us, celebrate our fallen soldiers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Watts?
Quiet week, nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilman Skellicorn?
Since it sounds like reports aren't allowed, I will not give a report.
Thank you. Councilwoman McMahon?
I also attended a business retention meeting with our economic director, Amanda Greyskrais on the Avenue, and she is so delighted with our community and our town. She is so happy that she's doing business here and serving so many people, and that they enjoy the food she serves, that she just feels very, very successful. So on her behalf, thank you to all who participated in her business. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
No report.
Thank you. So recently, we, our crisis communication team met and went, went over our outline for communication if there's a crisis in this town. I also attended the MAG's, MAG Mayor's meeting. We went to a couple of ribbon cuttings here in town, Chill Boutique and Construction Services, who are both good valued businesses in town. I participated in the Legion's Silver Rose Ceremony, which is a recognition for veterans who have passed away due to Agent Orange cancer. We had a new restaurant in town that had a soft opening called Bliss. It's where Sips used to be. A nice little restaurant in there, and they're open for breakfast and lunch, so if you can get down there, they, they would appreciate it. We had an Economic Development Advisory Committee meeting, which was successful, and we're outlining some things that we're going to be examining and doing. I attended the River of Time Museum. They had a new exhibit there on music and people who have visited the town of Fountain Hills, so it's pretty interesting. You can actually go in there and push a button and hear some of the music that was played during their visits here over the history of the town. And it was actually an open house for the, for the museum as well. There's a new director there, and she's got quite a vision for this town going forward, so we need to support them. And the next coffee with the mayor is scheduled for May 13th down at Fountain View Coffee down near the fountain. And that's, that's it for the reports. So now we'll move on to recognition, and I've got a recognition here that I'm going to read from one of our planning and zoning commissioners who's stepping down, and this is for Patrick Depa, and I think he's in the audience, so I'll have a certificate to give you when I, when I get done, and maybe you might want to say a couple of words about your experience, Patrick. But, "Thank you for your dedicated service as a planning and zoning commissioner. Your time, expertise, and commitment to our community were truly valued. The work of the Planning and Zoning Commission plays a critical role in shaping the future of Fountain Hills. During your three years on the commission, you helped provide recommendations to the council on updates to zoning ordinance for treatment facilities, parking signs, wireless communications, home occupations, zoning procedures, and more. You also reviewed and provided recommendations on numerous development applications for rezonings and special use permits. Your contributions helped ensure the reasonable development..." preserve our community's character, and enhance the quality of life for all of our residents. So we truly appreciate your thoughtful consideration on these complex issues and your ability to balance diverse perspectives and your willingness to engage in open and constructive dialogue." So with that, we want to say thank you, and if you step forward, I can present this to you.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. The truth of the matter is this is really my pleasure, okay? Being with the commissioners, supported by John Farhad and Paula. These individuals were very passionate about what they do. They would bring their minds together, aside from all the emotions and the politics, and make recommendations to the council based on land use. And really, I really enjoyed it. It was a pleasure for me. Like I told John, I had to step aside to refocus my attention on the family, to build and strengthen them. And so I haven't given up on serving the town. I will continue to volunteer in other means, but thank you.
Thank you. We have a proclamation. This is Municipal Clerks Week. So we're recognizing our clerk and all clerks. Whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of our local government, exits through... Exists throughout the world. And whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants... I didn't know that. And whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerks provide professional link between the citizens, the local government bodies, and agencies of the government at other levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. Whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, and county and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk. Now be resolved that I, Mayor Jerry Friddell, along with the council, on behalf of the town of Fountain Hills, do recognize the week of May 4th through May 10th, 2025, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week. Thank you very much. And now we'll move on to our presentation. Rachel?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask our Public Works Director and our Community Services Director to step up. We're going to be doing an update on the current year, so FY '25 CIP update. So essentially, where we're at with each of the projects, if they're complete or if they are intended to be complete, where we are budget-wise, just to kind of give a big overview of where we're coming in at the end of the year.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be leading off tonight and going through the capital projects for the Community Services Department. And then Justin will come in and share the public work side of things. So we'll start off with our Golden Eagle Playground project. It did come in a little bit over budget, but not a lot of over budget. This is a... We do have $50,000 of this is in carryover, and that's included in this total amount, just in case they don't get it done by the end of the fiscal year. We have... So you'll see that in the budget for next year, the 50,000. If we don't have to carry it over, we'll pay it in this year, and then that money will go back into the pot. But all of this has been ordered now, and we're anxious to get it put in. This is... It's going to really tie in all the other pieces that are already at Golden Eagle, and will definitely be a draw for a lot of our kids that are out there at one of our most heavily-used parks. This is our Avenue Linear Park multi-year project. The shade structure will be beginning to be installed here in the next two to three weeks. It is... It's fun when you're working on a project that even the engineers are excited about. And coming up with the design to build this was not an easy task for them, and they were even excited about how they were able to get it completed and to fit over this entire area to provide shade so you can have a shaded spot to sit with... At the picnic tables that are out there currently. It is going to be a great sight, and I know that it's something that our TAMA group was really excited about as well, for the businesses to have some more shade on the avenue where people can come and spend more time and, in return, hopefully purchase some more things from our businesses. We also have started on the event receptacles. That project's underway right now, as well as our root barrier that's going in on the avenue to help protect our pavers from the invasive roots of the sisu trees that are out there that are constantly lifting them. So that's going on right now as well. So we have a lot of projects that are going on the avenue between now and the end of June. It's going to be a busy, busy place. In this project, right now, we're under budget for the year. And just to explain also, all the expended money doesn't mean that we've already spent it. It's money that we have earmarked to be paid for things that are going on currently.
Kevin, what's a little black box?
That's the new event receptacle. So out there, you know how we have the little itty-bitty rectangles that are galvanized metal right now, and then we plug the spider boxes into, and then we have the cord that wraps around it, and then the chain that locks it up to it? This is going to replace all of that.
Is that what that pigtail is that's coming out of it?
Yes. You'll have little cords coming out instead of a giant... So anywhere that we have... Like the Christmas lights will all plug into this. That will face away from the sidewalk so that it'll be designed to go out towards the street for the fairs and all the events that use them, as well as all of our tree lighting.
Cleaner than those little yellow things.
So much, and safer.
Thank you.
The trip hazard alone scared me to death every year. That's why you saw the horrible yellow cone sitting on top of the horrible yellow spider box. So we're cleaning it up. This next one, the budget got hit a little bit on this one to push it over because we did the price quoting on this last October when we were... A year ago, October, when we were doing the budget, and the price of everything skyrocketed in the middle. And so this project's a little bit over. It came out fantastic. It's been being used now for quite some time and has gotten a lot of appreciation from our pickleballers that are over at Fort Peaks Park and our leagues and tournaments and everything else that's being played over there. Panorama Park, we just did a substantial completion walkthrough on it. There's a few things that they still need to fix before it'll be completely done, but we did come in substantially under budget on this one, and I think it looks great. Got lots of plants out there. We do plant smaller to let them grow bigger and stronger, and it saves us a lot of money. And in time, you get it all back really quick when it comes to planting smaller plants versus bigger plants. The smaller ones always catch them. It's just the nature of how you plant. This one's a little more complicated. This one, we are in the design phase of Pleasantville Park. We're working on... I'll be meeting with them next week for our first meeting. And we ended up moving some money around from this project this year so that we could do some more street paving. And so we're only doing design this year when we were planning on doing design and build. So this one, you will see again on the budget next year so that we can bring it to fruition. Down at Fountain Park, we had a carryover from last year to this year of $50,000. We ended up spending $10,000 of that. So we did put $39,000 back into the capital budget from that project. The community center, we're moving along on this one. The divider walls, we ended up coming in at $332,873 on getting those installed. Those have been ordered and are scheduled for installation the last two weeks of June. The ceiling fans have also been ordered, and the motorized blinds, we're currently finishing up a contract with that to get those installed as well. All of that is on pace to be done by the end of June. We just met today with our lighting people and have come up with a plan. It's going to be really tight coming into the end of the year. We're going to get a quote by the end of the week from them. So this one is going to be really tight and may need to carry over into next year a little bit so that we can get those lights installed as well.
Kevin, those lights are all... I mean, those items are all installed, labor included?
Correct.
And I think if I recall correctly, we had a $50,000 budget on the lighting. So even if we took that, you're looking at about a $70-some thousand under budget?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
With that, I'll take any questions on our community services side of capital improvement? All right. Thank you all very much. It's all yours.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, first, thank you for the opportunity. I would like to take just a moment to remind everyone in front of me and behind me and on the screens that the process for capital project planning and budgeting oftentimes is 12, 14, to 18 months prior to the beginning of the year. Most of you on the dais are aware of that. We are really doing our best to estimate the cost of not only community services but public works. The numbers that you are seeing tonight are based on accurate information that we had two weeks ago. Keep in mind that we're not through with the year, and several of these projects are not over yet. The first one is a good example that's been going on for about three decades. This one right here was deferred to next year as a result of some geotechnical challenges that we faced. Those geotechnical challenges have been addressed. We anticipate the 100% plans very shortly. I'm glad that you're all sitting down. The estimated engineer's cost for this at the 60... Between 60 and 90% in 2022 was about $3 million. Their current one is about $6.2 million. As a reminder, the town's portion of that is 30%, or about 1.6%. The reason we're bringing this up and we're discussing this now is because of expenditure limitations mandated by the state. It is likely that we will have to split this project between two fiscal years. What that means is we will be going to bid later on this fall, in the wintertime most likely, possibly in the spring. Get all of that process over and a notice of award from the mayor and council with the understanding that we would start prior to June 30th and finish after June 30th. What that allows is for the town to expend that funding, because this is a reimbursement. We have to spend it and then get reinfunded. But it has less of an impact on the expenditure limits should those additional funds be needed for other things. Again, two years ago, plus or minus, it was $3 million. Right now, it's $6.2 million. It's also important to note that most recently, similar projects to this in the last 18 months, plus or minus, some of them have been over 100% over the engineer's estimate. There is a number of factors that are contributing to that. As a reminder also, we will not know the true number of what it's going to cost until we open the bids, and we obviously will share that information with you as we move forward. That was a lot of information on the first little project here. Are there any questions related to this? We'll move on. Congratulations to the town of Fountain Hills. We were very successful with support of the manager and the council in securing $4 million in bond money. The end result of that is 4,000 additional linear feet of sidewalk that the town did have an investment in. But for this year, it looks like there's going to be about $12,000 left. Again, we're not quite finished with the paper process, but the project is over. This is another good example of good leadership from the town manager and council. There has been a multi-year project to eliminate sidewalk gaps. Earlier this year, we did the area around the Desert Vista Dog Park and/or Desert Vista Park along Tioga. We also completed a section in Eagle Mountain, and it's important to note that the Eagle Mountain Homeowners Association contributed to that fund as well. And lastly, the part that we're going to do later this year, and we're going to talk about some year leaping here. We are going to install a sidewalk on La Montana, fronting bashes. So that's basically from the driveway leading to the hardware store up to Palisades. The reason we're doing it in two years is because we do not have enough funds in this year's balance to do so, and it would deplete next year's balance, and it would leave us with very little options for some other small infill sections. This is also a multi-year. In this particular instance, and the location selected, which is McDowell Mountain Road, just north of the grade school, we are going to get our portion of that guardrail done before the Maricopa County Department of Transportation undertakes a rehabilitation project that starts at Milepost 2 and goes all the way to Forest Road. That is going to be a very long project, and given the narrow challenges that they face, there will be delays. We will share information from the county with the council as that project gets closer. Again, I'm moving pretty quickly and talking a lot. Any questions so far?
Yeah, I've got one. Jerry? Thank you. Yeah, with the guardrail replacement, are we replacing damaged sections of guardrails and ones that have been possibly hit by cars that weren't insured? Or are we replacing what seems to be in this picture a perfectly functioning guardrail?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, so this is a stock photo that's not even in the town of Fountain Hills. The area that we're discussing, the timbers have deteriorated and are in poor condition. And also, when the county redoes their portion, which overlaps us, the town's guardrail would be approximately four inches lower, and a transition section would be in that area. So it's a combination of compliance and outdated and/or damaged. So the timbers...
So the timbers are rotting, is that what you're saying?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. This is a project that was pretty important to a lot of people, not just the town manager and mayor and council, but the people that traverse the downtown area and other sections of town. While these photos, and I, and I appreciate our drone pilots, this was taken while they were sealing Saguaro between Colony and Fountain Hills Boulevard. In the very near future, in the coming weeks, all of these mid-block crossings will be striped. Obviously, the signage is already there, but it'll be a badly needed improvement to the downtown area and a couple of other sections. It's also important to note as part of that, and these photos will demonstrate that, the town manager recently, after a discussion related to marked crossings and the inconsistencies in them brought to my attention by a few folks that were grabbing a cup of coffee in town, made us realize that we needed to be more consistent with marked crosswalks. And you may have noticed lately that we've made improvements to several locations on the Avenue, Parkview, Birdie River, Palisades, the areas where we have curb ramps and/or stop signs that will allow people to cross. We are now simply enhancing that with our adopted crosswalk details. Any questions on this one? Awfully quiet. This is another multi-year project. We looked at several projects prior to this year starting, and we had a couple of priorities that were damaged as a result of some storms and some trespass by what we'll call contractors needing to dispose of material. The priorities unfortunately have changed. Most recently, while visiting a location where a homeowner described the condition of his neighbor's property along Ashbrook Wash, we discovered that at some point in time in the past, a considerable amount of construction debris was dumped in the wash and on the town's property. This is a tributary and/or a street that drains water into Ashbrook Wash. That has become our new priority. The town engineer has put together a scope to get that material out of there and get the work done prior to the rainy season, which I'm not sure if we just passed one or we're coming into one based on the conditions outside. But this is another good example of the challenges that we face here. And, and the mayor and several other council members have entered some of these washes and some of these tributaries and, and are witness to the stuff that we, uh, we are witnessing. This is a second phase to a project that we didn't even know existed until we were doing the first one down in the courtside villas. In this particular case, this project is out to bid. We are going to be opening the bids very, very shortly, and depending on the threshold amount, we may be coming back to the council. If it's below the budget, it's a green light project and we will proceed. It's also important to note that we have applied for a grant to pay for 75% of this project through the flood control district. We've not yet been notified, but past applications give us a good feeling that will be approved. Either way, we have the necessary budget and the project will be completed. This is a long time, ongoing project that was started, stopped, delayed and/or deferred. And for anybody that's had an opportunity to traverse Shea recently, you'll see that some of these signs are, are being installed as we speak. We anticipate, based on the progress to date, that this project will be on budget and completed before June 30th. Lots of talking. Anybody have any questions? I intentionally use this photo, and I have another actual film that I send him occasionally that shows the damage that happens at Golden Eagle Park as a result of poor design for the drainage areas and storm events that are becoming increasingly unpredictable. This project right here currently has funding to pay for the work that we were aware of and was included in the bid tab. I will be returning to this council in the future, very near future, to ask for additional funding. It has become increasingly clear that the owner's allowance granted to this project by the mayor and council in the amount of $200,000 is simply not going to be enough. I'm not going to give you any estimates for what we believe that will be, because that's the only number that folks will remember. But I will tell you that we have experienced some challenges on this project that we would have never imagined, including but not limited to electrical lines, outdated, antiquated, non-compliant regardless of what year they were installed, water lines, and shallow utilities, and just a host of other issues related to elevations and concrete. We have been out and visited the site. We have a series of requests for information. The management company, along with the team, which the majority of are sitting in this room right now, Kevin and the town engineer, David Janover, we review each and every change order thoroughly. We vet it. It's taken a considerable amount of time, but the first six out of 11 were approved last week. Again, we have adequate funding right now to continue moving forward and pay the bills. But prior to the end of this session, this council session in June, we will be returning and asking for additional funding.
Question? Go ahead, councilman.
When you talk about utilities that are either not code compliant with, with current codes and whether they're in AC type codes, or they're not buried deep enough, or so on, you're talking about those, presumably you're talking about those utilities that are on our side of demarcation point for the utilities. And so we have responsibility as opposed to the utilities. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, council member Watts, that is correct. I'm referencing the customer side of the utilities and primarily the two inch and above water lines that provide potable water. We'll be discussing more of that later on as we get into some other, uh, capital projects related to piping and irrigation townwide. But the primary issue is that. There's also some money spent out of this project that did not go to that contractor where we secured the services of specialty contractors that would come out and help us locate our utilities after they were dug into because we were unaware of their presence.
Is that called blue steak?
Well, the 811 center only marks the facilities that are owned by facility owners, electric, gas, um, water, those types of things, and they only mark up to the meter or the POD point of delivery or POS point of sale. For this particular, it's after the point of delivery or point of sale. So all of this stuff is the towns from their controllers to their buildings, from the controllers or the service entrance section to the pole foundations, drinking fountains, other facilities within the park, so privately owned.
So you had to outsource the underground utility locators through a third party?
Correct. We, we have a contract just for that.
Is there any damage to any of the utility suppliers themselves where, as it comes on to the property that where it becomes our responsibility? Anything outside our, our immediate area that we have to be aware of?
To date, I'm not aware of any of the public utilities being damaged.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Justin, that project's still on, on target, right? To be, be done by the end of the year?
Mr. Mayor, the schedule currently has it on June 27th. And for those who have not had an opportunity to visit the site, you can see the majority of it safely from one of the three parking lots, or if you're adventurous, walk up onto the dam. It's an excellent view. There was some discussion earlier tonight from Kevin regarding the community center. This is the portion related to the assessment and the update that was provided to the mayor council just a few short weeks back. As a reminder, there was $500,000 budgeted. Of that, the assessment was $90,900. That included the destructive roof investigations that was presented in the presentation. The monies outside of that were explained earlier tonight regarding, um, the fans and the lighting and stuff like that.
But you don't have any funds in there at this point for, obviously the chiller's not in there, and the roofing repairs where it's delaminating, most likely or not, and any additional water diversion or weathering on the windows? There's, that's not included?
Mr. Mayor, uh, council member Watts, so that is in next year, and an agreement will be forthcoming for the design of the roofs, and the chiller is actually on the next slide, separate project.
It's just hard to keep track of what year you're putting money into, so my apologies.
So this, this is, that's okay, and I understand it. This is an update for this year, but next year is when we're going to begin the design on the roof replacements for all three buildings, or repair, whichever is called for. These are the estimates for the chiller, and you'll recall that there was a considerable amount of discussion from the council related to this. As you can see, we were able to save a little bit of money. There were, it was considerably higher in the estimates, but as the work was completed, then the, then the numbers came in lower. I think it's important to know that not related to this project, but the chiller operations, we've asked the town manager for some funding to make some changes to the controllers over there, sir, they're simply not compatible with some of the newer equipment, but that budget will come from our operating budget.
Are you talking about when you say changes to the, is it, to the, is it changes to the programming, the hours of operation? What type of changes are you talking about?
That's a little bit beyond my technical expertise and, and unfortunately, facilities is not right here right now, but from what I understand, all of that stuff has already been accomplished. There are some pressure monitoring devices that need to be updated.
So it could be just a communication issue between the existing, um, devices and the new monitoring system?
That's possible. Not my, I, I don't want to start fishing. I'm just not for certain.
And who ended up with the, with the old chiller and the old refrigerant? Did, did the, the installing contractor reclaim that, recover it?
No. Um, the refrigerant and the old chiller is the property of the town.
Gotcha. So we're looking for a third party to buy that then?
Well, we, it's a little bit difficult. We can put it up for bid or send it out to auction, and given its, its weight, we're weighing our options on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That was awfully quick. Just a few questions. Any others before we go? Once again, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. We'll move on to the call to the public. Town clerk, are there any speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor, we have eight cards. We'll start with Beth Culp, followed by Liz Gildersleeve.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Beth Culp. I am a resident of Fountain Hills. I have here before me Fountain Hills voter guide. This was published by Mayor Friedel when he was running for mayor, and, uh, when, in contrasting himself to Mayor Dickey, he says, advocates for open town meetings, and then as to Mayor Dickey, he says, prefers closed door meetings, which I thought was an unusual turn of phrase, but in any event, based on what has been happening this year, particularly the last five weeks, it seems like our mayor has developed a preference for closed door meetings. Five weeks, four executive session meetings. One of those executive session meetings involved a discussion of council decorum, and it's beyond me to imagine how that topic could justify a closed door meeting. Before the meeting today, there was another lengthy, at least it was scheduled to be lengthy closed door meeting. And it's my understanding that one of the topics involved the fallout from the resignation of our longstanding, much admired town attorney. 18 years, Aaron Aronson served as our town attorney. And, uh, by the way, he was, his firm was retained when, uh, Mayor Kavanaugh, not Mayor Dickey, was the mayor. We are entitled, just as I remember council member Watts and council member, um, Earl took the position that the Campanelli should, report should be released. We are entitled to know what our town attorney was referring to when he submitted his letter of resignation, and he referenced accusations made by council member Earl that his firm had engaged in fraudulent billing. That's a very serious accusation to level against a very well-respected firm. And we've been told that the council member conducted an audit. We're entitled to see those audit papers. You made a pledge of transparency. You said you opposed closed meetings. We ask, no, we demand that you release the audit and that we move forward. Thank you.
Councilwoman Earl, would you? Councilwoman Earl, would you like to respond?
I tried to explain earlier and I wasn't allowed to.
You have your chance if you so desire.
May I read?
And I'll make one correction too. Aaron was actually the town's attorney, I believe, for six years. Is that right, uh, town manager? Twenty, since 2018, not 18 years.
The firm resigned. Thank you. I'll begin from the beginning. For my council report tonight, I prepared a brief statement to address recent events transparently, while respecting the confidentiality of executive session discussions. As a member of the council, my duty is to oversee the responsible use of public funds. That's why I requested an executive session to review the performance and financial aspects of our contract with our law firm and share my findings. To clarify, the mayor and town council as a collective body are responsible for hiring, firing, and conducting performance reviews of the town attorney, presiding judge, town prosecutor, and town manager, while the town manager oversees all other town staff. I've had a lot of questions in the last two weeks. That's why I'm making these statements. My request for this review was within our council's authority and aligns with our obligation to ensure accountability, accountability of how taxpayer dollars are spent. Following the session, the attorney chose to terminate their service with a 15-day notice. Subsequently, the attorney publicly mischaracterized my actions in statements reported in the Fountain Hills Independent alleging I was sharing false information from a self-initiated personal audit and described my efforts as a witch hunt. Let me be clear. These claims are inaccurate and unfairly undermine the oversight role we as council members are entrusted to uphold. My actions were rooted in responsibility, not overreach. A few days later, the council majority chose to retain the law firm for a 60-day transition period to ensure continuity. I acknowledge their decision, and I'm committed to working collaboratively during this time. I'm optimistic we will secure exceptional, principled legal professionals who will serve Fountain Hills with integrity and accountability. To our residents, I pledge to remain steadfast in my commitment to honesty and transparency within the bounds of the law. And if anybody wants me to release what I found, I have no problem, but that was in executive session, so.
Town clerk, next speaker, please.
Liz Gildersleeve, followed by Chris Clemens.
Good evening, Liz Gildersleeve, Fountain Hills resident, registered voter, and concerned taxpayer. I'd actually like to thank Councilwoman Gail Earl tonight for having the courage to challenge the Pierce Coleman vendor contract. Given Mr. Aronson's unprofessional reaction to the Councilwoman Earl's findings, I'd say she was right on track to question whatever she reviewed. Because instead of showing up to the last town council meeting after your executive session, Mr. Aronson chose instead to abandon you all at the last meeting, but he did find time to pen a written temper tantrum for the local newspaper that evening, attacking Councilwoman Earl for having the audacity to ask questions. That's unacceptable. I believe that moving forward to find another law- I believe that moving forward to find another law firm is the right call. It also highlights the fact that vendor contracts in this town need a more regular and rigorous review. Otherwise, everybody falls into a false sense of complacency, and that is never good for taxpayers. So thank you again, Councilwoman Earl, for your efforts and for truly looking out for the residents of Fountain Hills.
Chris Clemens, followed by Renee Yarian.
Hi, Chris Clemens, and I'm a resident of Fountain Hills. When we moved to Fountain Hills 17 years ago, I decided to attend town council meetings as a way to be introduced to our town and the people who reside here. The meetings were interesting and informative, and I met some great people. Beginning in 2022, I noticed a big shift. Some of the new council members' goal appeared to be a desire to cause disruption and discord. I wondered why. It has continued. For example, the signs making false claims against Brenda, a fellow council member, that were displayed along Shea and the B line. I found these very upsetting. These signs should should bother our mayor and our present council members and should have been addressed. By not speaking out, you are demonstrating a lack of courage and a sense of decency. I have met and spoken to our mayor at other social events in town, and I find him to be a pleasant person. And in many aspects, he is doing a great job and has a wonderful rapport, a rapport with the businesses in town. However, he needs to remember that he was elected to be nonpartisan and show qualities of leadership such as honesty and integrity. And you know what? I know he will. Thank you.
Renee Yarian, followed by Ed Stizza.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Renee Yarian, and I'm a long term Fountain Hills resident. I'm also addressing the resignation of Aaron Aronson, who resigned on April 16th effective May 1st. And our local paper, The Times Independent, did receive a copy of that letter for a documents request and said, Councilmember Earl has been sharing false information from her self initiated personal audit of my law firm, Pierce Coleman. Specifically, we learned that she accused the firm of overbilling the town of Fountain Hills by hundreds of thousands of dollars. She and two other council members also speculated without evidence that there was some unidentified improper conduct of the firm's billing practices. Aronson called that action a witch hunt with little or nothing to do with money. Councilmember Earl's true intent is clear. Quote, she is using a disingenuous and unsophisticated audit of the firm as a cover to appoint a favored ally as the town attorney. Aronson said the town and Pierce Coleman agreed on an annual flat fee in 2019. That is exactly what the town was charged. The contract has not been amended since then. He went on to write that other than one litigation matter for which the town separately retained us in 2024, the firm has not charged the town one cent of extra expense in nearly six years. So now, a long term relationship was destroyed, and we lost high end legal services from the among the highest ranked law firms in the state, along with a very cost effective rate. On whose authority was that audit conducted? And what did the audit consist of? I'd like to see those documents. How does that benefit Fountain Hills? How does that qualify as ethical behavior? Once again, being baselessly accused of overbilling or unethical billing practices, especially under false pretenses, that's totally unethical. It is flat out wrong to slander our legal representative. No wonder Aronson did not attend the meeting following where the ethics code was totally gutted and the citizens' rights to file a complaint was totally eliminated. Where are the so called audit documents? Those documents need to be made public. This unethical behavior has a monetary cost to Fountain Hills. We will have to pay more for legal services and may not get the quality of representation that we deserve. Why would any legal firm, if they do just a little bit of homework, even want to work with a town who operates with such ethics and makes slanderous accusations of overbilling? It has been noted that the audit was to provide cover to appoint a favored town ally for our attorney. It'll be interesting to see if that happens. Show us the audit documents.
Ed Stizza, followed by Pam Cap.
Good evening, Mayor, town council staff, and the public. I'm here to speak about a couple things. One of them is I'm not going to touch too deeply into the mess of the whole legal representation of the town. But I think there were some things that are missed. I mean, didn't Aaron Aronson have a fiduciary responsibility to be at that meeting that night? Nobody seems to talk about that. So anyway, one of the things I want to speak about is the shade structure. And I appreciate that Kevin finally put up a rendering of a side view of the shade structure that's supposed to be started as far as starting construction July 1st or at the end of June. I don't think the public, I've said this before, was completely notified. And certainly, they haven't had a chance to look at this, unless I am completely wrong. That is the first side view rendering that anybody in the public has seen. So and I'd love to be corrected on that. The only thing that was presented was a top view that all of you voted on within a package deal. This project was never separated and voted on individually. I do think there is some tremendous amount of concern with the public with the way this was done and presented. I do not feel that this is a structure that is going to enhance our downtown. And somebody, please show me the exact economic numbers that this is going to create. You are going to scar our downtown once and for all, forever. And this is a bad idea. I've said it publicly before. Bring this back out. Take a pause on it. I know this was voted on, and Kevin purchased this tent before it was solidified. I want each and every one of you to tell the public, this is your opportunity, to tell the public that you actually voted on these designs that are now out in the open. I want to hear it because I can't believe that anybody with any sort of sense of this type of scope would act of a project would actually approve this in our small downtown area. This thing's going to sit there 90 to 95% of the time empty. There's nobody, nobody, that's not going to agree with the fact that this is going to block certain views. And I don't see the economic benefit. And that's why it's being put there. Yeah, we need some shade. But at this, this thing is 100 feet by 60 feet. This is a large shade structure. And these poles, some of them, I think there's four of them that actually butt right up against the curb. And I mean, isn't that somewhat of a hazard as far as people driving through town? Thank you.
Pam Cap, followed by Crystal Kavanaugh and Matthew Corrigan.
Good evening, Pam Cap, nine year resident. At last council meetings, council meeting, Vice Mayor Larrabee, congratulations, by the way, stated the Alms Budsmen will take ethics complaints from residents of Fountain Hills. I emailed the Alms Budsmen and asked. I found out they do not handle ethics complaints. They only handle Public Records Act and Open Meetings Act violations. I was surprised the two year council member wouldn't know that. So I'm unsure if giving out that false information was a mistake or intentional. Also, as a resident, I have some questions. When Councilmember Earl made the allegations against our town attorney, Mr. Aronson, I expected to see some type of proof. Just saying bills being were being padded by hundreds of thousands of dollars without some actual facts seems on brand for a rot council member. If you will remember, Councilmember Skillicorn, a proud rot member, sued our town for violating his First Amendment right. Yet the judge found that no factual evidence.
Point of order. His name is Skillicorn, not Skillycorn. Skillicorn.
Thank you so much for that.
Please.
Appreciate that. Yeah, that's very kind of you. So anyway, he sued our town for violating his First Amendment right. Yet the judge found no factual evidence to support the complaint was presented. Rot sued our town as well regarding the Village of Four Peaks housing development. Their complaint was also thrown out. No factual evidence. Do you see the pattern? Now, Councilmember Earl alleges wrongdoing by Mr. Aronson's law firm, presents zero evidence to us, the residents, only vague allegations of overbilling and unethical behavior. If this overbilling of hundreds of thousands of dollars occurred before Councilmember Earl arrived on this council, why did Councilmembers Skillicorn, Friedel, and Toth approve it? Shouldn't they have caught any improprieties, especially Friedel? He was a banker and has a durkery in finance, after all. How could he miss overcharges of hundreds of thousands of dollars? At a recent Republican meeting, Councilmember Earl reported to them on what was called a deep dive into our town's attorney. Earl stated that she requested to review reports, but the attorney resigned instead. If she has no reports to review, how deep did she really dive? Or was this the usual revenge agenda? I will provide to this council a document titled Briefly Speaking Monday Morning. This resident is a top member of ROT. And this is a sent via email to Republican club members. On page two of this document, it has a list of employees that have been have resigned or in some residents' opinions were forced out. That document states, and I quote, "The citizens' house is getting cleaned," unquote. Was this preplanned? Sure looks like it. The document also states that Mayor Friedel's goal was to replace longstanding staff who effectively were operating as the mayor's political force. Mr. Aronson was on a hit list.
Good evening, Crystal Kavanaugh. As I drove into the parking lot tonight, I once again saw the anti-ROT license plate on the car associated with a council member. On social media and with our miniature self labeled nonpartisan newspaper, there are plenty of rantings and accusations about ROT this and ROT that, which often include my name specifically by a select group that continues to attribute all things they disagree with as being the work of ROT, regardless of facts. Select individuals continue to sling the term ROT around in an attempt to insult or diminish some of you on this dais. The ROT candidate, the ROT council, the rotten ticket. I think we just heard it a few minutes ago. As stated many times, ROT, or more accurately, Reclaim Our Town, is simply a political action committee that embraces a conservative philosophy, fiscal responsibility, and the goal of maintaining our beautiful town as the exceptional place where we all chose to live. Quite a popular viewpoint, actually, according to the majority of Fountain Hills voters. I hope this entire council stays true to your commitments and continues to work for the benefit of the people. Embrace the true spirit of ROT as the very reason that the people voted for you into these positions. ROT is in no way negative. When they call you the ROT council, just know that you are carrying out the goals of many. R, responsible representation for the people. O, oversight on spending and outcomes. T, transparency in the decision making process. Working together for the people of Fountain Hills should be your top priority. This current team of council members is completely capable of meeting goals with respectful discussion and the motivation to get it done. In contrast, when someone in the town allowed the newspaper to print the name of a sitting councilwoman, Gail Earl, paired with the terms such as false accusations with no expanded explanation, that was outrageous and inappropriate, in my opinion. And I'm very curious about some of the comments that have been made here at the microphone tonight. Things that seem very specific. Is someone knowing what happened in that executive session? Standing up for one another when warranted can go a long way to building camaraderie in order to accomplish the objectives necessary for Fountain Hills.
Last speaker is Matthew Corrigan.
Mr. Mayor, Matthew Corrigan, Fountain Hills. I had the privilege in 2023, beginning in 2023, of running for town council. And the honor was to be on the same slate as Mayor Jerry Friedel, Rick Watts, and Gail Earl. You learn a lot about people when you run on a political campaign with them, what they do publicly, what they do privately, how they react to situations. You learn things about character, honor, trust. You learn things about how they define and embellish certain things that are powerful value core elements of their character. So now I want to talk about Gail Earl. Running with Gail was a pleasure because Gail always was honest, upright, truthful. But the thing that was really significant about Gail, she always asked questions. She was both a competitor and a cohort. She would ask questions that were deliberative, truth seeking, and depth serving. And I found that to be consistent throughout. She continues to do that on the council. The problem is that there are uninformed people, they should be informed, but they refuse to be, who just cast aspersions, make assumptions, and repeat what they hear from the mainstream media. We only have one source, Fountain Hills Times Independent. And they repeat these same accusations over and over again. These are public comments. They're letters to the editor, and it's fine. I love First Amendment free speech. I support that. But when it comes to character assassination, misinformed information to destroy character, that's where the line should stop. That's where it should end. I know Gail, and I know many of the council people here and the mayor. These are fine people. And when I see them excoriated and humiliated, whether in public or in private, it disturbs me. It reminds me of another council member who's sitting on the dais, who has simply asked the question like Gail would ask. Gail would always ask questions. Quite frankly, it would drive me nuts. But it was for a reason, always for a reason. She wanted to know. And we have Alan Skillicorn, who also asked a question. And for that, he asked one question, and for that, he was excoriated. And they use they use civil justice, I would call it, to bring him a false accusation. Thank you.
That was all of the speakers.
Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda items.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second, anyone?
Second.
We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Watts.
Aye.
Councilmember McMahon.
Aye.
Councilmember Calviannakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Earl.
Aye.
Councilmember Skillicorn.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Larrabee.
Aye.
And Mayor Friedel.
Aye.
Mayor 70.
Thank you. We'll move on to our regular agenda. So I need I'm going to make a move. I need a motion to approve, to reappoint a couple of community service advisory commission people. And we've got Ron Rupert and Natalie Valera, who will who will serve a term from May 1, 2025, to April 30, 2028. Were there any comment cards on this?
No, Mayor.
No, okay. Any discussion on this, on these appointments?
Mayor, who seconded that motion?
Nobody's seconding yet. I'm going to ask for the motion in a second. There hasn't been a motion. I made the, I made the motion. I made the motion, so I need a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Earl?
Aye.
Councilmember Skillicorn?
Yes.
Councilmember McMahon?
Aye.
Councilmember Calviannakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Watts?
Mayor, these are reappointments?
Yes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Larrabee?
Aye.
And Mayor Friddell?
Aye.
Mayor 7-0?
Thank you. And we'll move on to 9B, which is consideration and possible action, adopting a resolution 2025-16 to amend--
Mayor, we have to do 9A?
I'm sorry?
9A first?
We just did A.
Okay.
Anyway, to adopt the comprehensive fee schedule for the court. Rachel?
Sure, I want to welcome Judge Melton and Joanna Elliott. They are not familiar faces out here with us, but they're here to give an update on the court fees. Did you need assistance down there? Hold that thought. Paul to the rescue. Bev, do you know if the PowerPoint got added to the packet? Okay, we'll go grab it. No problem.
Putting me on the spot here, my gosh.
Paul, we like, we know you like to be up before the microphone.
This is your homework.
There we go.
Mayor, Council, good evening. I'm Judge Melton. What you have in front of you today is basically is an updated resolution, where we're seeking to basically--
Judge, pull that microphone down. There you go.
There we go. Update some of the fees and costs that the court currently charges and add a few more. Most of these are consistent with the other jurisdictions within the valley and state concerning what we're asking for, for this resolution. What we have up here is basically what we're, the fees were proposed currently and what the new ones are. You want to run that? These are a comparison to what other courts currently charge for similar fees to what we're asking for to be imposed. And the final one is basically some of the reasons why. Keep in mind that we, as court, can only incur or charge fees and costs that both either the statute allows or this council allows. We can't just make up stuff as we go along. So any fees or costs that you okay, that we can charge, we'll certainly do so. Keep in mind, local fees that we're asking for here stays with the community versus being sent off to the state, so that's certainly a benefit to the town. We're also asking in this resolution, basically allow semi annual review of these costs. That generally doesn't happen very often. Usually, we go a few years without doing anything, and then we come back in front of you with a resolution and say we'd like to up these fees. What we're asking for in this is a basic modification, allow you to do that every year. And when we adopt the current cost schedule for the town, these can be included in those, so it makes it easier to adjust them if the council deems it appropriate. So this is really what we're asking for at this point. We've put it together. Again, it's in line with a lot of other jurisdictions. Are there any questions?
Councilman?
I'm not sure if this is for the judge or if this is for Rachel. Is, is the reason for asking an increase in the fees is because we're not covering costs today, or are we just trying to keep up with everybody else?
Those are more for keeping up what a lot of other peoples do.
But we're covering costs today?
We're covering costs as opposed to what the court brings in versus what it, what we spend?
That would be covering costs.
I don't know. I haven't seen those numbers. I don't, usually municipalities don't--
Here comes Paul. He's going to bail you out.
Literally.
It's going to bail you out.
Mayor, councilmember, I'll try to answer. I might have to provide a clarification later if I'm slightly incorrect. We bring in about $210,000 a year from the municipal court. Our budget is within the general fund and court enhancement fund, most of that in the general fund. That amount, I don't have off the top of my head. It might be around $400,000 to $500,000 for the operations, $400,000. We do, we are planning to budget a little bit more out of the court enhancement fund next year for the court security, about $25,000. And so some of these fees on this comprehensive fee schedule will go directly into the court enhancement fund. That is statutorily authorized to allow the municipal court to support further court programs and services as needed.
But we really don't have a reconciliation of the frequency of each of these events, whether they're enhancements, warrants, defaults at this point, to say whether or not we are short or whether we're, we've got excess funds. We don't know that at this point, or you do know that, we just don't have that information now?
At this point, the revenues do not meet the expenditures of the municipal courts. The expenditures exceed the revenues that we're bringing in. And so the whole point of the court enhancement statutory allowance to charge additional fees is to kind of supplement that, which we are, we have been bringing in about $30,000 of those fees every year, and if we're, I think, I believe we're doubling them. So with that $60,000, we could, you know, supplement some more of the court's costs through that fund, which we haven't used too much in the past, where we are using it for the court security starting next year, though.
It looks like some of the increases are relatively nominal, so I don't have a big issue, but I think maybe next year, if we're looking at doing something similar, that we want to do a little bit better, a little more information on detail as to where we're at and why we want to do these things. So I appreciate that, though.
Councilwoman?
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve this and also add that we do review it every year at the time we review our budget--
I'll second that.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember McMahon?
Aye.
Councilmember Skillicorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Earl?
Aye.
Councilmember Calviannakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Watts?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Larrabee?
Aye.
And Mayor Friddell?
Aye.
Mayor 7-0?
Thank you. Thank you, Judge. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is consideration of possible action for Resolution 2025-18, increasing a stipend up to $750 a month for council members and increasing the stipend to $1,100 a year for the mayor. Councilwoman Earl?
Just as a reminder for the council, this is the, this is based on discussion that was had at the workshop and the discussion that was brought forward by Councilwoman Earl. This is your time to formally vote and adopt the resolution to move forward with that discussion, if you so choose. So there was a question about, well, I thought we talked about this already. This is the formal process to adopt the resolution, if you guys so choose to move forward with this.
Thank you. Can we have discussion, please?
Councilwoman?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. As we learned from Aaron, our attorney, in March specifically states that the Arizona Constitution forbids us from giving our raises during the middle of our terms. Raises are allowed at the beginning of our terms or when the election break occurs. Even the Arizona Legislature, I looked up some information on them, they haven't had a raise since 1998, I believe it is. They are working on putting, getting a bill passed so that they can have a raise, but their raise will not go into effect until January of '27 if the voters pass it. And that's in accordance with the Arizona Constitution, which is the law. So if council chooses to vote in a raise for themselves, it cannot happen in June of this year. It can happen after the election next year pursuant to the Constitution. It allows an increase to take effect, either at the beginning of the term or when new members take office. And precedent is not law. It's precedent. It's an example. It is not, you don't have to follow it, and in this case, it has no application because the Arizona Constitution supersedes that and is very, very specific about timeframes that elected officials can vote themselves in a salary increase. Thank you.
Councilman Skillicorn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I would like to quickly lob a question to the town attorney. Is it constitutional to approve or deny this ordinance tonight?
Mayor and councilmember, I'm not, I typically do not give legal advice in public, so, I mean, you're asking for me to apply the facts of this matter to the law, and so that would be a matter that would be appropriate for executive session.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, some thoughts that I have. I mean, traditionally, I would prefer to go along the route of what towns like Paradise Valley and others do, and they don't pay council at all. So I'm always looking for ways to save some money. So there's two thoughts that, how could we make this better? And one of them I think of is if this stipend was, you know, adjusted for inflation to include some intent and maybe even craft my motion to include this, to preclude any travel expenses, because this, originally, when this was created 30 years ago or whatever, it was supposed to cover the cost of computers and cell phones and paperclips and staples and things like that, but, you know, things, times have changed. I mean, everybody has a cellphone, everybody has a computer. What I think of it as is this would cover costs of council, include travel to meetings, travel to, you know, hobnobbing with lobbyists. It would, it would cover all that there. So then, these travel expense reimbursements would be void at that point in time, and it'd save staff quite a bit of time, and I think that that would, it would clear that up. So, you know, if I do make a motion, I would probably include that and make sure the intent was very clear. But also, you know, I like the idea of a greater policy. Every year, when we talk about budget, we talk about, you know, giving staff raises. You know, I kind of wonder if we should just set a, like a policy. We do, like, every five years, we do something that sunsets, and, you know, we can give staff automatic CPI adjustments for five years, and then that'll sunset, and five years later, we either reapprove it, adjust it, or maybe things have changed, right? I kind of wonder about including that. Now, I don't know if I can include that in my motion, but I'd like to, actually.
But that's not before council right now.
I don't know. I--
We're talking about council raises.
No, you should probably adjust chair, but I understand--
Don't talk over--
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate questions, that's fine, but it probably should be adjusted to the chair. You know, but, Mr. Mayor, I kind of wonder about, you know, maybe even just adding the intent that that's how that's going to be, is that we can cover that, but also, why don't we include that same policy to include council? You know, that could be, you know, sunset every five years, so we don't have to, we think about a 25-year thing. You know, I'd rather have policies to stand on instead of, you know, just kind of randomly thinking things to do. So what I will do is make a motion to approve this CPI adjustment, but also apply it in the future to CPI and have it a five-year sunset, but also include that it would, there would be no more travel expenses and things like that. And, you know, frankly, my intent that this policy would save us money because there's, you know, certain people that like to, you know, do events with lobbyists and do fancy events and submit those travel receipts. So that's my motion.
I'd second that.
Vice Mayor?
Sorry. I'll second that, but I do, I have a question. In reading our staff summary, it sounds like that's, that was already the case. Is that correct with the travel reimbursements?
It is. And so what I wanted to clarify, and I think, I think we captured the intent of what you're trying to share, Councilman, but I want to make sure. So this is a resolution, so the motion is to adopt the resolution, and where it does say the stipend establishes, established in this section are in lieu of any other salary or wages, reimbursements or allowances for cellular devices and services, reimbursements or allowances for use of personal vehicles within Maricopa County, and other incidental expenses. So the intent is kind of outlined in the existing resolution, if that captures what you're looking for. As far as the policy portion, we would need to bring that back as a separate item, which we can certainly do that.
Thank you, town manager, and that was my understanding as well, so I'm very supportive of your comment regarding travel expenses, and if there's anything that needs to be added there to cover that just thoroughly in this motion, I would be supportive of that. I think before we can continue, we need public comments. Is that correct?
We have discussion here, and then I ask for comments.
I am also very interested in perhaps a follow-up agenda item that would regard the cost of living rates that typically occurs and how we might tie that in with council and staff and just have a regular policy regarding that. I'm supportive of that.
Councilwoman Calviannakis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for clarity's sake here, to address Councilwoman McMahon's concerns, now, the way I read this and what the staff report says is the Resolution 2025-18 would increase the stipends from such and such and so-and-so beginning in January 2026. So I am assuming that if we just did an up or down motion on 2518, that this would go into effect in January 26 with the new council, correct?
Correct. That's consistent with what the discussion was at the workshop.
Right. So, yeah, so all due respect, Councilwoman McMahon, I don't think the constitutional argument is going to have any weight here because the courts have ruled that it can be done in between terms. So if it's a four-year term, like with the new council members, they can vote on a raise for the next council, but not for the current council. And so I just want to clarify--
The next council will be December 26 after the election.
That's correct.
And in place, probably in the, in January.
Yeah, that'd be in the upcoming council, and that's when this would go into effect.
Would it be December when they're seated, correct?
So just to clarify, January 26th, meaning roughly six months from now.
Oh, okay. I got you.
The election and seating happens roughly 18 months from now.
Okay. And in that case, I would like to address the constitutional concerns with this. Yeah, we can't do that. Just, just, it's that simple. The 27th Amendment to the United States Constitution ratified 1992 prohibits any raises or lowers of the salaries of members of Congress from taking effect after the next election of representatives. In other words, Congress cannot grant itself a pay raise or decrease during its current term. Now, of course, this is the United States Constitution, but that is the legislature. It is the controlling legislature in our country. The states and the localities should be following the direction of the 27th Amendment. The spirit of the law says you don't vote yourself a raise. Now, an old radio announcer named Rush Lindbaugh used to say, let me demonstrate the absurd by being absurd. You know, we could all vote ourselves a $2 million raise tonight, float it out to the end of our term and break the bank. I mean, if we simply can't vote ourselves a raise. Not only that, but there was an Attorney General of Arizona, Bob Corbin, who wait on this. This was October 22, 1990, from the Attorney General's Office in Phoenix, and he concluded, therefore, we conclude that a city council, town council, may receive a salary increase in the middle of the council member's term, provided the increase meets the conditions of Article 4, Section 2, and is at the beginning, the beginning of a new term. And so this is, Attorney General of Arizona has weighed in on this. The United States Constitution has weighed in on this, and I think it's, it's just the wrong thing to do for us to be voting ourselves in a pay raise. And not only do I object to it, but I wouldn't accept it. I would, I would take the money and donate it to charity because I wouldn't want to have anything to do with this. That would be dirty hands.
Councilman Watts?
I think if my recollection serves, Aaron, as our prior attorney, said it went both ways. He's had, seen it done both ways by the next term, and we don't really have a clear definition of term, and it has-- And we don't really have a clear definition of term, and it has been, it happened midterm. So I think there's, this puts and takes as to what's going on. And I think the backstory to this whole thing is that it's a normalization of what should have happened a long time ago. From the standpoint of 1990 to now, whatever the timeframe was, this normalizes council going forward. I think it kind of, what Councilman Skilicorn was saying about normalizing the effect of cost of living increases consistent with staff's increases makes a lot of sense. So we don't have this ambiguity going forward. At some point in time, and frankly, the $350 a month doesn't mean a whole lot. It's more of a principle than anything else. But I do recall Aaron saying he's seen it both ways. He wasn't a supporter of either. He just said he's seen it both ways.
Thank you.
Councilwoman.
March 10, he wrote an email to Rachel. And in that email, he once again reiterated that the Constitution allows an increase to take effect either at the beginning of the term or when new members take office. And he's stating, as for the prior ones that were mentioned out of turn, not following that, it's possible that the town attorney at that time didn't advise, or perhaps the council heard the town attorney's advice and went a different direction. Whatever the case, this has been the law since 1990, and it hasn't changed. And everyone in my firm agrees to this approach and interpretation as well. In other words, Aaron's standing on the law, on the Constitution. He's not going either way.
Councilwoman Earl.
I apologize. I didn't come prepared because I didn't know. We were discussing it that much more. But we did, after that email, we did have our meeting, a work session. And we brought the information from the 2000 meeting. And the attorney at that time explained why it was okay because some people were concerned about doing that. And he explained why it was okay to be able to do it at that time. And we shared that, and that's when Aaron said what he did that Rick talked about. Thank you.
What attorney was that?
Point of order.
It's in the minutes, if you go back and look at the minutes of that meeting.
But they're not the attorney now.
Vice Mayor.
I would like to encourage anyone curious or concerned to look back at that previous meeting. I wish I had come with all my notes as to the reasons why. However, I mean, this had already been discussed, and I'd remind my fellow council members that this was also agreed upon with these concerns already having been discussed. So I take objection to this poisoning of the well we're now seeing with constitutional concerns that haven't been brought up the last two times we've discussed this. It's insulting, frankly.
Councilwoman.
Thank you for being so insulting. It's really unbecoming of you. And constitutional law is the law of the land. And that is what it's saying. I'm not making it up. I'm reading right from it. And in fact, again, in a written email to Rachel, Aaron is legally advising us as our town attorney that this is against the law. And it doesn't go both ways. So we can't impose this raise at the time it's being requested in this, in 9C. We have to wait until there's a break in the election and our terms changed. So, you know, poisoning the well?
Thank you.
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Are you stopping me?
I would just like to call for an executive session so we can get legal advice.
I think you've pretty much done that already, haven't you?
Well, apparently, it's not getting through to people that the United States Constitution overrides town councils and state governments. So maybe if somebody else were to say it, it would sink in.
I don't think we need it. Vice Mayor.
All right, I'll clarify. The United States Constitution is referring to Congress, our federal government. There is a difference between the federal government and our states. That is why we are a United States of America. We also have our own state laws. Now, the federal government does not govern whether or not councils can give themselves a raise, given that our state legislature does not have a law regarding this.
Yes, they do.
And that this, the state legislature, it says right in there, in our packet, the law that the state legislature has regarding councils says the common council may be, may by ordinance or resolution prescribe a daily compensation or salary to be paid by the mayor, to be paid the mayor, councilman, and administrative board members for the performance of official duties. Now, technically speaking, we're not even referring to a salary. We're referring to a stipend. This has been done in other municipalities. This has been done by our own town president. And again, this has already been discussed twice before. What I refer to when I say poisoning the well is that there's clearly political interest in saying that we're wrong in doing this, when we are not. We have done our research. We have gotten our advice from our attorney. We even all agreed on this a few weeks ago.
Thank you.
I think we're going to hear from the attorney.
It's the Arizona Constitution.
Mayor and council, while it's not prudent for me to give legal advice from the dais, there is an Arizona constitutional provision. I'm not going to read it verbatim. I believe Aaron's already advised you on it. But there is a provision that controls when and how a town council or city council or any legislative board of the state can increase or decrease compensation.
And, thank you. It's right here. It's the Arizona Constitution. It's Article 4, Part 2, Section 17. It's not Congress. It's not the United States. It's Arizona Constitution. The legislature follows it, and we have to follow it as well. Thank you.
Councilman Watts.
I've got an easy solution. Why don't we just increase the mileage to like $25 per mile? I mean, we've had the conversation over and over again. We talked about it at length. I don't think I'm going to vote for it. But on the other hand, at some point, we have to normalize what is a reasonable compensation. And then going forward, we have to do something along the lines of what Councilman Skilicorn said, which is we have to make it a normal course of events so it mirrors whatever we do with staff. So if we give staff 2.5%, 3%, then council should get the same thing, same agreement. So then that's really what it ought to be. So why don't, for the time being, I'm going to vote for $25 a mile and see if that doesn't cover my costs. Because we also had in there that there was a 30-mile limitation, and I think that will come up when we say we actually establish the policy as opposed to the resolution. So there's a lot more to come about this, but I think it gets kind of silly at some point. Let's move on.
Councilman Skilicorn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was kind of curious if the other council member wanted to amend the motion. Sounds like a no. And just sort of clarification, the motion did not include a limit for mileage.
Okay, I think we've heard enough from the council. Let's see if there's any speaker cards on this. Town clerk.
Mayor, we had 13 cards online provided. All 13 were against. We have six speaker cards, starting with Beth Culp, followed by Renee Yarren.
I'm going to make this quick. This is embarrassing. I don't think any of this is funny. You know, we'll just charge $25 a mile. We'll get around the Constitution this way. This is embarrassing. It is embarrassing that this town council is even sitting up here and talking about enacting legislation, a resolution, in violation of the Arizona Constitution unless you have a written opinion from a lawyer that what you're proposing to do is indeed legal. You have no business considering that. And if you go ahead with it, you will be very, very sorry because you will lose respect far and wide. This is ridiculous and silly and a total waste of time.
Mayor, council, my name is Renee Yarren, and I'm a long-term Fountain Hills resident. At the recent budget meeting, some town council members indicated that they tend to treat themselves better than the rest of the town. If you can lift sanctions on a whim sans legal input, gut the ethics code, and get rid of the town attorney, why not go for broke and give the employees a pittance and give yourselves a windfall? Despite all the data suggesting that a 3% increase was appropriating, appropriate using the Consumer Price Index, private sector comparison, social security data, and other Arizona municipalities, Councilwoman Nowlereby said, "I think a 2.5% raise is perfectly reasonable for the employees." But what's good for the goose is not good, according to our novice councilwoman, good for the gander. She proposed a 75% increase in stipends for all council members from 400 a month to 700 a month. And for the mayor, she thinks an 83% increase is warranted, his stipend increasing from 600 to 1,100 per month. Did I hear that right? Seeking a disproportionately large increase for them, but a substandard increase for staff. What's wrong for this picture? It's ludicrous, and it's very unfair. Our local fire department requested consideration for an upgrade, three-command personnel project as part of the regional automatic aid system, and that's important for the safety of our community. It could be well worth that cost, but the council put that decision off for six months. Would you rather have reliable assistance during big emergencies this summer and retain experienced and knowledgeable town employees, or give the council a huge and untimely stipend increase? It's pretty obvious. A solid no for a resolution makes sense for residents. Staff should get a 3% raise, and council should get the same.
Kimberly Bartman, followed by Jean Schletka.
Kimberly Bartman, 23-year-old, not 23, I wish I was 23 years old. 23-year resident of Fountain Hills, this beautiful town, best town in the whole world, according to former Mayor Schlum, beloved former Mayor Schlum. Okay, so I say no to the council and mayor's raises. And despite all the legal ease and all that, this is just to say, some of you have only been in office for a short period of time. So, you know, aside from the legal stuff, I don't think you deserve a raise. And I think that the town staff should get the 3% to 3.5%. Let's see, the cost of living adjustment. And no to raises for you guys. Now, also, some of you have been very divisive. And I know that Matthew Corrigan mentioned that he was surprised by the harsh treatment of some of you by citizens via letters to the editor and people speaking up here at the dais. But if you recall, there were some really ugly signs back in the day, political signs, that none of the people that were on the slate, the four of you that were on the same slate, that are not rot slate, but rot slate, that you, none of you spoke up. I reached out to some of you, saying, "Speak up. Speak up against those signs that are so nasty," and you didn't. So calling, you know, people, the public coming to say things of concern is not nastiness. And then I miss our Aaron Aronson. He really spoke up and helped you guys keep control of these meetings and help you maintain the quorum. Also, I-
Can you stay on the agenda item?
Yes.
You're getting into a call to the public.
Well, no, I want-
And we've already done that.
The reason I don't want you to have raises is what I'm trying to get to, is that the interruptions by council members that are speaking, and that I think you have a lot of executive sessions because I believe you're trying to have talking points to increase your outside political agendas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, I'm Jean Schletka, 30-year resident. First, I'd like to say how excited I am to see Beth Bender back with us. Thank you. Welcome back. I'm so against the ridiculous proposal of pay increases of the town council members and the mayor. 75% for the council, 83% for the mayor, and 2.5% for our town staff that work very hard. You were all elected to serve your community, knowing, knowing the positions are paid at a low level, but more than the many hundreds, almost 1,000 citizens of this town that volunteer their time free of compensation. Plus, they pay their own expenses out of pocket for gas, for example. Which one of you can't pay for pay increases of approaching 100%? I've never heard of that. You're all serving, as do the hundreds of town volunteers, because you love this town. Maybe you should emulate those many volunteers and not even accept any compensation. Finally, some of you are offering a minuscule pay increase for town staff. Suck it up. Both the salary requests down. Thank you.
It's Dezah, and then the last speaker will be Matthew Corrigan. Matthew Corrigan. We have one more speaker, Wendy Dashell, after Matthew Corrigan.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I think it's been clarified that in 1990, the minimum wage was $3.80. And today, it's $15. So I guess my proposal might be that each of you could take maybe 12 hours to work at McDonald's, and you could make more there than you could serving on council. Tongue-in-cheek, I think it's about time for a raise. Those were very, very old stipends. And whether you do it now or later, something should be done to catch up with the economy. We went through four years of radical inflation. Costs on everything went up. We're normalizing that now. We're coming back down. But we're still in that high-priced era from the last administration. And that's just a fact. You can go to any source, you know, any source to find that out. So I'm for the increase. It's a minimal increase from $400 to $750 for council. That's reasonable. It's normal. How you do that, I guess you could go back again to executive session, work it out. You've already done that, but apparently that hasn't satisfied some. So I don't know what the answer is, but I do want to speak in approval of this miniscule increase in public service, which is what you're doing. You're serving beyond the stipend that you get. The hours that you work researching and developing consensus among each other, that's certainly worth more than $500 a month. And Mayor, 1,100 for you. So, you know, I'd like to see it go up to 750 and 1,100. I think that's reasonable. How you do that, I guess, is your next step. But I'm in favor. And that's all I have to say. I'm in favor of an increase. How you do it, I guess, back to the drawing board. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Wendy Dackel. I've lived here 22 years. I love this town. And I agree that this- I love this town, and I agree that this is just an embarrassment. You guys are getting so uptight about this. It's just unbelievable. However, you're civil servants. When you were running for office, you knew what it entailed. You knew what the stipend was. It wasn't like you were going to get rich being on the council. And I think that the staff deserve a cost-of-living raise. 3% sounds reasonable. I don't think 80-some percent. It's just horrifying, in my opinion, that you would even consider taking that money. Thank you.
Mayor, that was the last speaker.
May I ask a question?
Councilwoman?
So to understand, assuming we have to vote on his motion first, but I'd like to make a different motion if possible. I'm not sure exactly how that works.
He didn't get a second, so.
Oh, he did. She did second it. Oh, amend the motion? Okay. Alan, if you're, I'm going to ask you if you feel wanted. So it seems to have upset a lot of people. Yes, it's not a big jump, but I just want to explain, we are just making the equivalent of $400 to what it was in 2000 to 2025 or 2026. The staff has received raises since 2000, and, but, and also the previous council, if they had this discussion before, but they chose not to have future councils have the raise, I don't know why they didn't do that. But I'd like to change the motion to, we approve this resolution and make it effective when the new council is seated in 2026. December of 2026, instead of January 2026. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I would be agreeable to that, as long as we don't change any other terms and there's no travel and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Which is in it, yeah.
So we have an amended motion and a second. We'll put it up for a vote. Any other discussion from the council? Roll call, please.
Councilmember McMahon?
Nay.
Councilmember Calaviannakis?
Nay.
Councilmember Watts?
Nay.
Councilmember Skilicorn?
Permission to explain my vote. So if I vote yes, what I'm doing is agreeing that we should adjust the 2020 numbers to inflation, but also hopefully saving money by eliminating travel reimbursements and things like that. And unfortunately, I think that there's some members that take advantage of that. And then if I vote no, I'm still encouraging certain members to take advantage of travel reimbursements and, you know, potentially actually cost the town more money. So even though I'd prefer we extend this to 20, no, I'm sorry, 2050, I'm going to vote yes.
Councilmember Earl?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Larrabee?
Aye.
And Mayor Fidel?
No.
Mayor fails. Four to three.
Okay, so we have Paul on deck to talk to us about adopting the tentative budget. It's all yours, Paul.
All right, Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity tonight. So we're here after a long, long process of many discussions, retreats, meetings, to summarize and discuss what the tentative budget looks like and consider adoption for fiscal year 2026. So first, we'll start with some key updates from the proposed budget, which we discussed on April 8th. So what we did, we added 2.5% cost-of-living adjustment for town staff to the budget. Most of that impacted the general fund for a total of about $270,000 of increases to the budget. One thing to note with that is any changes that affected the general fund did not increase the general fund budget. Because we balanced that fund to revenues, we actually increased the budget in certain departments, and we decreased the contingency within the general government department within the general fund. So you'll see the general fund's the same amount, but the contingency went down, and I'll show that on a slide in the future. We also recalculated the fire department revised command structure supplement to begin on January 1st, 2016. That reduced the fire department budget in the general fund by $111,000 approximately. We, well, this one will actually take out of the budget with the council stipends. We prospectively included that in the budget, considering it for ease of reference, but because of the last vote, we'll actually remove that, and I'll mention that when we get to that slide as well. But that would have been about $18,000 to the general fund budget.
Can I address that last screen?
Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you go back to the last screen, please?
Yes.
At our previous council meeting, we had discussed at the end of the meeting to bring the cost-of-living adjustment for town staff back in front of the council. Rachel, would it be appropriate this time for us to give guidance on that number? Okay, because what I'd like to suggest is that we, I'd like to go to 3.5%. I don't think there's a will for that, but I think that we would for 3%. So I'd like to increase the cost-of-living for the town staff to 3% on this new budget.
Do we need a motion, or what, Jer?
So I think, yeah, at the end of the presentation, as we move to adopt the proposed budget, that's where you can amend that.
So I'll touch on that. If there is discussion at the end about that particular subject, councilwoman, so there's kind of two options we can do. We can adopt the budget as is and just make adjustments within. We'd have to reduce contingency, probably in the capital projects fund, to increase a couple other funds to address whatever increase to cost-of-living adjustments there may be. Otherwise, if there is that conversation and there is that amendment, we could add certain dollar amounts to the streets fund and the economic development fund to account for those cost-of-living adjustment changes. So I have those amounts in front of me. If that conversation does come up, we can add that to the amendment.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it up.
Councilman Watts has a question.
Yes, Councilman.
If I'm not mistaken, the fire department initially had $232,000 in the budget. So we didn't really decrease the budget. We allocated half of that amount to the current period with the stipulation that the second half would become effective in, as of January 1st of 2026, I believe. So a budget decrease of $111,000 is not actually telling the full story, is what I want to make sure is clear.
Yeah, that's a good point, Councilman Watts. So because we included that full $222,000 as a recommended supplement in the proposed budget, it was included in the figures we presented. So what I'm trying to present here is that because we recalculated and about half of that was actually included in the budget, from the proposed budget to the tentative budget, that change decreased the fire department budget by about $111,000. But you're accurate in what you stated.
Right. I just, for those that weren't here during that arduous process of going through the budget, I didn't want to have the perception that the council decreased the fire department's budget. We did not. We actually increased the budget with a proviso that says as of January 1st, 2026, we're going to get the other half included for the updates for the auto aid. So that's already in progress.
Yes. That's an accurate and excellent point. So when we're looking at the fiscal year 2025 budget we're currently in to fiscal year 2026, what we're actually doing is adding $111,000 to allow the fire department to revise its command structure as of January 1st.
And I'll add to that, it did not affect safety whatsoever for this town. We still have the same quality personnel and people serving us.
And to that point, Captain Ott actually is in the process of making the application, is what we talked about, the auto aid, getting that process, because that was a long-term process as well, doing part of it as we move forward, in the anticipation of being approved or accepted into the program, would align closely with that January of 2026 date. So that's already in progress. So the rumors about we've defeated auto aid are flawed. We have not. We're moving forward. Captain Ott's doing that. We've made the trends, we've made the commitment already, and it will come to fruition in January.
Yes, that's my understanding as well, so I appreciate you pointing that out.
Councilwoman McMahon.
Thank you. Since we're talking about the fire department, I would really like us to please reconsider. It's, in essence, giving a raise to the staff, but also without automatic aid, from what I understand, is that we're not equal partnership with other cities and towns, because we're not, we're taking more services from them than we're providing, because we don't have the same ratio of firefighters in the sense that automatic aid requires. So they provide battalion chiefs, et cetera, but when we, they need our help, we're not in equal partnership with them. We're not providing them basically the same manpower. And we're using their services a lot in that respect. And the fire season is coming up this summer. So I would really like to reconsider that, even though, yes, there are applications being made, but I would like to change it from not happening, and I guess January it is, but to have it happen in this fiscal period, I guess it would be June or July, and because the money's there, and I just, I don't understand why we're waiting. And I know the fire department would really appreciate it, because they could promote from within, we could get automatic aid sooner, and provide equal partnership with other fire departments. Thank you.
Councilman Watts?
As I recall Captain Ott's presentation, we receive and we provide very close to the same amount of service. We take it, 100, we get 100. It makes it less, less manual, because we have to do it manually today, but we still get it in a timely manner. And the application process isn't just snap your fingers and move forward. The application process, the application process takes somewhere between 90 and 180 days to get through the process. That's why we made the decision to say, "Let's move forward." It doesn't happen overnight. The application is in process. It will come to fruition January 1st, and we've already allocated half of the money now, and the rest will be January 1st.
Councilman Skilicorn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director, I just want to quickly ask a couple questions. You know, I see here that the tentative budgets are $53.4 million. What is our statutory expenditure limit for the upcoming year?
Mayor, councilmember, it's on another slide. It's 36.5 something. Let me just jump ahead a little bit, just so I give you an accurate amount. $36,581,877 is our expenditure limitation.
And are we effectively, I know that's a lower number than the tentative budget, but there's other, you know, fund transfers. Are we effectively spending up to that limit?
We, so I want to make sure I state this clearly and accurately. It's a complicated answer. Yes, we are, in our budget process and even the forms that are statutorily required to be filled out by the Attorney General's Office, we're required to show the amount we're budgeting and projected exclusions, as well as, in this case, we're planning to use carryforwards of the money that we've saved up. So we have budgeted to become, to make sure we're at least $1 below the expenditure limitation. So, yeah, we're complying with the constitutional and statutory provisions in our budget process.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Director. And I just want to point out that, you know, with unknown economic activity, unknown sales tax revenue, I would much prefer a austere budget and would love to see a, you know, 5% to 10% cut. So I will be opposing this, because I would prefer a lower tentative budget. Thank you.
All right, any more questions at this point now? Okay, so the fourth item that we made a change in the budget for was we asked council for carryover for the wayfinding signs project, just in case we don't get it done by fiscal year end. So what we did is we added that to the budget in the capital projects fund, and we decreased the contingency amount. So there was no budgetary impact dollar amount to that change. We received notice of some utility increases, mostly at the fire department and the community center, so we included additional budget for those notices, about $5,000 added to the general fund budget. We actually identified in our reviews, so we will do this in the final budget review as well, just going through everything, making sure everything's kind of tied down, reconciled. We noticed that someone had mistyped an amount for the fire department in their uniforms budget. It was $30,000 overstated. Talked to Chief Ott just to make sure. We reduced that amount to the appropriate amount, so that reduced the fire department budget by $30,000. The fire department actually just purchased a new command vehicle for the fire chief, and so what we do, we've kind of talked, touched on it a few times in these budget discussions, but we have a vehicle replacement fund. Anytime we purchase a new vehicle in the town, we start saving up for the future replacement in that vehicle replacement fund. It creates an accounting entry where we charge our budget for an expenditure to set aside money. So basically, that's a convoluted way or long-winded answer to say, "We added budget to the fire department to account for saving up for that fire vehicle replacement in five, six years from now," and that added $6,000 to the budget for the fire department. And the last substantial change was, at the last council meeting, there was a request considered by council and approved unanimously from the International Dark Sky Discovery Center to apply for grants. So, you know, with grants, those are excludable from the expenditure limitation, so when you increase the budget, it doesn't count towards the expenditure limitation. You can also exclude it in your budgeting process. So we added $3 million to our special revenue fund to account for that in case the grant does come through next fiscal year.
As I recall, the $3 million for the International Dark Sky Discovery Center was effectively a loan that we were going to pay in advance of receiving the grant, once we were approved to receive the grant. So shouldn't that have a zero impact? I thought we calculated that it was only about $100,000 worth of actual hard costs that we would incur as a town. So that $3 million is front money as we receive reimbursement based on that grant and the reality, I guess, that we do get the grant.
Right. Mayor, Councilman Watts, I've gotten this question several times, actually, so I, you know, I'm going to have to go back and watch how I stated it. Let me clarify for you a little bit. It is still confusing. We're not finding the money. We're not paying for any of the exhibit costs upfront. With this grant and the way a typical federal grant would work is, it's a reimbursement basis, and what we act through, act as is a pass-through. So let's say the project is $3 million total. The Dark Sky Discovery Center would pay the $3 million for the exhibit themselves, without touching any of the town's money. They would submit reimbursement requests to the town, so we would act as the grant administrator and review the invoices to make sure they're appropriate and proper expenditures of the grant. We would submit those documents to the federal government, and if the federal government approved it, at this, this is later on, this is after they approve a grant and award the money. If they also agree that the money has been spent appropriately in accordance with the grant requirements, they would give the money to us as the town of Fountain Hills, and all it would do is go into our coffers, and then we would write a check out to the International Dark Sky Discovery Center. So the $100,000 you cited is just for the town to recover our costs as needed. If Michael or myself or Biotta, the senior accountant, if we're reviewing grant documents, if we're submitting, you know, reimbursement requests, we're able to submit for those costs that we incur and get money from the federal government. So hopefully that explains or clarifies it a little bit.
No.
Okay.
It kind of does, but the bottom line, that I understand it anyway, is that the $3 million that we theoretically are going to apply for, and hopefully that we get it, really doesn't affect our budget. It has a short-term impact on our budget. It has a short-term impact actually on cash flow as opposed to overall budget.
It's kind of a nuanced discussion. It's kind of a nuanced discussion because it would be considered a federal expenditure under a grant as a pass-through. So we would have to record it as an expenditure in our financial system to even disburse the check, and we'd have to go through a federal audit to ensure that we're complying with those requirements as the pass-through. So technically, although it is complicated, in this case, we would have to record it as an expenditure, and we would have to budget for it. There's other cases where we receive money that aren't ours like that, where we wouldn't have to. One example is we require home builders to get a landscape bond with the town. They pay $2,500 to the town. They're required to complete the landscaping when they're building a home, and once they do complete that in accordance with the plans, we give them their money back. That's not an expenditure of the town. That's just us holding their money, giving it back. In this case, as a federal expenditure for a grant, we're required to record it in that fashion.
But doesn't it zero out, basically?
It does.
Other than the $100,000, so.
Right, it does.
It has a, it has a cash flow impact on the budget, but we don't actually pay the $3 million. That is paid through the federal grant.
Exactly.
We do. I understand the accounting is different than the actual cash flow, so.
Right.
I just want to make sure, when we look at increasing the budget by $3 million, I'd like to be able to accomplish Councilman Skilicor's 10% by saying, okay, well, that $3 million is going bye-bye. Don't have to worry about that, but that's not the reality of it. That doesn't really count in that equation.
Yeah, so the reality of that, we did complete the grant request with the Dark Sky Discovery Center, and the request came in lower than the initial request. So we always talk about how the budget is a balancing game, right? So we put $3 million, just to make it easy, and we're not really sure what we need to include. It came in at 2.1 million. So if that is something the mayor and council wanted to do, we could reduce that budget in the special revenue fund by 900,000 and still have that ability to do a Dark Sky grant if it comes in. Or we could choose to keep it. It does not impact us from an expenditure limitation standpoint if we get additional grants or other opportunities. I know there's been, you know, like the Public Works Director mentioned earlier, we received challenging news, right, that the Shea Boulevard widening engineering estimate is going to be a lot higher than we expected. Well, I don't want to get in the weeds too much, which I tend to do sometimes, but because that special revenue fund is fully excludable, we could use some of that budget authority to increase the budget for the Shea Boulevard widening. So there's, it gives us a little more flexibility, but it's not an absolute necessity by any means.
I understand. I think, I appreciate the explanation, and I'll have my people talk to your people so we can have a further conversation.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Councilwoman.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget as presented here. Second.
I'd like to make an amendment.
We have a motion in a second.
My amendment would be to approve Resolution 2025-10 with the amendment of increasing the town's staff cost of living to 3%.
A second.
So you vote on the amendment?
Right.
And then if that passes, then you vote on the amended resolution?
On the original resolution. Roll call? Oh, do we, do we have any speaker cards?
Mayor, we received 12 online cards that did not want to speak. Nine were against, three were for. We have eight speaker cards. We're going to start with Eric Landau, followed by Beth Culp.
Mayor and council members, good evening. My name is Eric Landau. I'm a former fire captain, 26-year resident of Fountain Hills. I'm here to speak about the three fire battalion chief positions that are planned in January, and council, Mayor and council member Watts, David Ott is our fire chief, not a captain. The fire service and the public which it serves have benefited greatly from automatic aid plans since they began some 30 years ago. They contrast with mutual aid, under which help from a neighboring department is not dispatched until requested. Rural Metro Fire could not participate because it did not staff its apparatus with the required number of firefighters. The Fountain Hills Fire Department does staff appropriately, but the automatic aid program requires a battalion chief be available from each participating department. We need to conform our staffing with that standard in order to participate. There are many benefits which accrue from automatic aid. When emergency occurs, firefighters that are closest respond regardless of jurisdictional boundaries. That provides high levels of service and effectiveness. If you drive past an incident in South Scottsdale and see Tempe fire units on hand, that's automatic aid. Automatic aid is considered the gold standard of emergency service delivery systems. Fewer fire stations are needed. Coordinated training and procedures help firefighters and chief officers do their jobs better. More senior officers means better delegation of incident management functions, including staging, liaison, safety, and personnel accountability. That is why we need a battalion chief at the head of each shift. Firefighters are accustomed to working together with those from other communities. They work together every day on routine emergencies, so they work better together during larger emergencies. Under an automatic aid system, fire departments also equip and staff their fire trucks in a similar manner. Support functions such as dispatch and communications are coordinated. Opportunities for joint purchasing lead to savings for standardized items such as protective clothing. Everyone pays less when a large quantity of equipment is purchased at competitive prices from the manufacturers. Specialized firefighting and rescue teams are shared. Hazardous materials incidents and building collapses occur infrequently. So fire departments in the automatic aid system train and work together to respond to specialized emergencies. Cooperation saves money and helps firefighters work more efficiently and safely. Finally, fire units responding via automatic aid augment our own department's assets. This can provide additional credit toward our community's insurance services office classification rating. Improved score means lower fire insurance policy premiums for residents and businesses. Let's put our own battalion chiefs in place and then join the automatic aid system without further delay. Now, not in January. Thank you.
Beth Culp, followed by Renee Yarian.
Again, quickly, what the former chief said is right. We all know it's right. We know that it is time for us to now support Chief Ott. Everybody admires him so much and what he's done. To ignore his recommendation is reckless. We need to get this agreement in place sooner than later. The other point that I would just like to basically underscore is, we need to pay our town staff. We have lost valuable town staff, and 3.5%, I think everybody knows that they deserve that. And the only reason anybody's hesitating is because this council, many of the members on this council, not all, have recklessly disregarded the fact that jeopardizes our safety and our well-being, that we do not have enough revenue. And what we as citizens expect is for you council members to come to terms with the fact that we do not have enough revenue. We've kicked the can down the road on our streets so far that we're so far behind now it's going to cost 60 million. If you'd looked at this five years ago and bit the bullet then, we'd be way further down. We're losing money, and now our safety is being jeopardized. This is not a poor community. We can afford to be safe. We can afford to pay our battalion chiefs. We can afford to pay our staff. The median income in this town is $187,000. We are one of the few communities that does not have a primary property tax. It's not a lot of money for anybody, but it would stop all of this ridiculous robbing Peter to pay Paul. I would very much, and I think many other residents of this town, would like you to start facing the fact that there's not enough revenue. You need to find a new source of revenue. That doesn't mean wasteful spending. It means being a responsible, caring, committed town council person. Thank you.
Mine will be short. I just want to echo both Eric and Beth of saying that we need to upgrade and have the regional automatic aid system, and not in January, but now. Would you rather have reliable assistance during big emergencies this summer? And we need to retain staff to do that.
Pam Cap, followed by Kim Bartman.
Pam Cap, nine-year resident and a retired police officer for 30 years, so public safety is pretty important to me. Fountain Hills Council's number one responsibility is to keep the residents safe from harm. That's what we pay taxes for. Postponing automatic aid upgrades to our fire department is irresponsible, foolish, and shortsighted. This council appears willing to gamble on how lucky we will be over the next few months. If it's actually like past fire seasons with lightning strikes in McDowell Mountain Preserve, which brought the hot shots to Fountain Hills, we should be making this upgrade the priority because the hot shots won't be coming this year. 4,100 forestry department employees, both firefighters and support staff, have been fired by Trump, so don't expect them. Upgrading to automatic aid saves valuable time because when your house is burning or you're trapped in a car, time makes a difference. We currently have mutual aid. That's when captains request more help on fire and incident scenes. This is where time is lost. Calls are made to surrounding communities. Surrounding communities are asked to send help. If they have available units, they are sent. The difference in automatic aid is dispatch can see on their computer screens which units from outside communities are closest and available. Those units are automatically sent, saving valuable time. We are in fire season already. Why wait until January 2026 when this council can utilize the $373,000 saved on our Maricopa County Sheriff's contract? Utilize those savings and implement Chief Ott's recommendations. Keep the savings from the Maricopa County Sheriff's contract in the public safety category. It was mentioned that postponing the promotions would save $110,000 by not upgrading now. That simply isn't true. Our fire department already follows the automatic aid protocol. Even though we are not part of the program yet, Chief Ott plans ahead and is proactive, signs of a good leader. Under that protocol, battalion chiefs are required. We currently only have captains. But the captains that perform battalion chief responsibilities receive step-up pay. So the savings are minimal at best. We are still paying for battalion chiefs. They just don't get the promotions required to be part of the automatic aid. Without these promotions, we will be stuck waiting for help instead of receiving it automatically. The homes in Fountain Hills are valued at much more than $110,000. Certainly, the lives of residents and our firefighters is valued at much more than that. I request that this council revisit automatic aid upgrade and reassess Chief Ott's recommendations. This can save lives and property now. Don't play with fire because it's going to be us residents that get burnt.
Kim Bartman, 23-year resident. First off, like I said, last time I got up here, definitely want the 3.5% cost of living adjustment for the town of Fountain Hills staff. And then as far as the consideration of promoting the three captains to battalion chiefs, this and the move for the other personnel to backfill the position, as Chief Ott had said prior on his February 24 council meeting, this will put the Fountain Hills Fire Department in a better position to participate in the automatic aid system. So please make this change ASAP, not wait till January. Thank you.
Mayor Gene Schlecker, and then the last speaker is Ed Stizer.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I'm Gene Schlecker, 30-year resident. Although I support the budget number in total, I have a few major concerns, and they've been covered pretty much. One is fire protection is important for any community. It's the number one responsibility of the town, but it is critical for Arizona communities. We're in the center of fire alley. So with that in mind, why would we postpone a fire protection needed until January? This is not, I believe, one of those nice-to-haves and something you can risk. So that request should be reinstated. Secondly, it's a travesty to a plan, to plan for only a 2.5% increase for our staff. The vast majority of economic predictions for 2025 inflation fall into the range of 2.5% at the bottom to 4% at the top, and there is an unknown negative impact from the planned Trump tariffs, your taxes. They'll raise our prices. Even Social Security's COLA this year is 2.5%. And I can tell you, those COLAs rarely, I mean rarely, match inflation. If my math is correct, and I believe it is, a minor pay increase to 3% adds only $54,000 to the budget. That's barely $2 per capita in this town. You can't even get a cup of coffee for that. And if it was 3.5%, then it would be $4 per capita. We can all afford that. Now, if all you paid volunteers just gave up your stipend, there would be enough for that 3% increase with money left over. Remember, you already gave up roughly $20,000 by not increasing the stipend. So please consider addressing my two concerns. Thank you.
Mayor Gene was our last speaker.
Can I ask?
Councilwoman.
Can we request Chief Ott to come up here and I ask him a question? Thank you. I just, I want to know, are we actually postponing fire protection? And I thought you were still applying for the automatic aid, and we will be getting that? Or are we waiting until January 1st till we could get it? Explain that to us.
Mayor, councilmember? I'm waiting until June 3rd, when the budget's adopted, before I can make the guarantee to the Life Safety Council that we would provide battalion chiefs. Did that answer your question?
So if we did not move them up to battalion chief, you will not be applying for the automatic aid?
We'll still apply for automatic aid. It's just, I need to know at what point I can tell them that we would have the battalion chiefs in place with that funding. So it's kind of contingent on the budget being adopted, whether or not those funds are available to fund those positions.
So if we, but I thought we had approved funding that January 1st. Would you then still have to wait till January 1st?
No, but after June 3rd, once the budget's signed.
Right.
Then I'll believe that you committed to it.
Oh, then you'll believe we committed to it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Until you sign the proposed budget, I have no way in knowing that we're moving forward with that.
So you're wondering if we weren't approving it for January 1st, is what you're saying?
We'll move forward with it either way, with it, once the budget's adopted, so I know we can fund the positions.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Watts?
Pointing clarification, initially in the budget, we had six battalion chiefs. Is that correct?
No, three battalion chiefs and then promoting three, backfilling the three captains that were promoted to battalion chief. So there were six positions total, sir.
Okay, six positions. But aren't we moving, isn't the half of it we've approved promoting those three battalion chiefs so that you can apply for the auto aid? So we're starting the process and some of the advancements, not all of them, but some of them.
Mayor, councilmembers, the 110,000 that's in there would be for promoting three battalion chiefs at January, beginning of January, as well as backfilling those promotions with three captain promotions and three engineer promotions. three captain promotions and three engineer promotions. So a total of nine promotions there that would be funded from that, beginning January 1st. It was my understanding from Chief, though, is that you're not waiting to apply for auto aid, and when those promotions are done, you're just waiting for the commitment that they will eventually be done.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The numbers guys are better at that than I am.
Councilwoman?
Thank you very much. Chief Ott? If it's approved for it to happen June 3rd, if we amend the motion to include this in the budget now, you will be able to promote them sooner and apply for automatic aid rather than waiting till January? I'm trying to understand the process. And as far as, like you say, well, once the budget's approved, I can do applications. However, you still can't promote because you're not going to have the money to do that until January. So, do you want the money June? Do you want the money January? I guess is the question. I'm trying to figure it out.
I would always take the money sooner. But with that commitment, with the budget being signed, that gives me the ability to let the Life Safety Council know that we're serious about the commitment, that the funding is going to be there as we'll move forward with putting those positions in place. They would be ready to go January 1st, based on what happens on the 3rd. Prior to that, we still are bumping people up into those positions. It's just not as cost-effective as it will be to fully fund those positions.
So it would be better to have the money approved in the June budget?
If you're asking if I would take all the money starting in July, I absolutely would take all the money in July.
Okay. With that in mind, I'd like, I don't know if this is allowed to make an amended motion to approve the budget and also include the fire department's command structure, the payment for that.
Thank you. Are you done with me?
Before you vote on the amendment, as I understand it, I can kind of let you know how that would impact the budget. It was the amendment for the COLA to be 3% instead of 2.5%. So in that case, that would increase the general fund departmental budgets by $51,351. That reduces the contingency from 1.07 million down to 1.02 million. So you still have the same overall general fund budget, but it would just increase the departmental budgets. We'd increase the streets fund by $3,581 to account for additional COLA for the staff that are paid out of that fund, the streets technicians and some of the public work staff. And add the economic development fund for the economic development division. That would increase the budget by $1,358. So in total, with the amendment, since we don't have to, it's very complicated, but we don't have to increase the general fund budget at all. That's the same amount. But we would have to increase the streets fund and economic development fund budgets by a total of $4,939. Hopefully that was clear and helpful.
So we're going to vote on the amendment? The first amendment? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Calviann Agus?
Aye.
Councilmember Skillicorn?
Nay.
Councilmember Earl?
Pass.
I said pass. You're the second to vote. Are you not voting? I said pass, correct. You've passed before.
Councilmember McMahon?
Aye.
Councilmember Watts?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Larrabee?
Nay.
And Mayor Friddell? Councilmember Earl?
Can you go back? She said pass.
So 3-3.
It goes back to me?
So it could be abstaining, present, yes, no?
Mayor, 3-3.
Okay, we'll move on to the next amendment.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I'd like to amend the original motion to approve the budget and include the fire department command structure beginning in June.
So with that amendment, before it moves forward, it wouldn't impact the overall budget at all? We just make the changes to the final budget to reduce the contingency by that amount and add the $111,000 to the fire department budget?
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember McMahon?
Aye.
Councilmember Calviann Agus?
Aye.
Councilmember Watts?
Nay.
Councilmember Skillicorn?
Nay.
Councilmember Earl?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Larrabee?
Nay.
And Mayor Friddell?
Nay.
Mayor, 5 to 2.
Now the original motion? We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Watts?
Can I have the motion restated after all of this?
I'll restate it. It was to pass the budget as written or as is.
That's what it was?
No changes.
Aye.
Councilmember Calviann Agus?
Aye.
Councilmember Skillicorn?
I still think $48 million sounds much nicer than $53, so no.
Councilmember McMahon?
Aye.
Councilmember Earl?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Larrabee?
Aye.
And Mayor Friddell?
Aye.
Mayor, 6 to 1.
Consideration and action on the legislators' bulletin, and I think, Rachel, you might have an update for us on?
As we all, I think everybody knows that the agenda calls and whatnot Monday have been pretty quiet. They're working on getting the budget together. But I did want to kind of highlight one thing that was passed and signed, which is SB 1308, which has to do with enhancing the oversight of silver-living homes. I know we supported that. We sent in letters to our legislators about it. So I wanted to note that that was something we supported that did get passed. So I thought that was a win as we await here the rest of these, but wanted to kind of make note of that. Yep, it's already been signed. Governor Hubbs has signed it.
Oh.
Thank you. Yes, absolutely.
That passed with bipartisan support, too.
It did. It did, which is great.
Anybody else, any legislative updates? No. Council direction to the town manager? Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've got two items, and the first would be, and I think we've addressed this tonight, on the releasing of the documents of the personal audit that you did on Pierce Coleman. And I was just wondering when those documents would be available to the public?
I don't have them in digital form, so I'll work with Councilmember Earl to procure that, and I'll be happy to share that once it's available.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And then the other thing I'd like to address tonight is I noticed that the press table is missing back there. Was that broken or is that under repair? And when is it coming back?
Councilmember, there was a discussion and a directive from the mayor and several other council members with the request to remove the table from the space. Given this, this is the council chambers. The mayor and council has that prerogative.
I would like that put on an agenda because I wasn't asked, and there's seven people on there, not three or four.
Point of order, you were not recognized.
You were not recognized. Please wait your turn.
Anyway, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so, yeah, this is the first I've heard of it, and I am on this council. I'm surprised that I didn't know about that. Mr. Mayor, would you like to comment on that? We've had a media table for as long as I can remember.
It's not an agenda item. So if it appears on the future agenda, we'll be glad to discuss it.
I don't understand why we would remove that table.
Point of order, unless you're suggesting an agenda item, this is not germane.
Well, then I would like to suggest we put that on a future agenda item, that if it's, I didn't know, I don't know if anybody else knew, but if it's been done, even without the council knowing it, I'd like to put it on a future agenda so we can vote on whether we would like to welcome the press to our town council meetings.
That will be, that'll come up for future agenda items if you want to discuss it at that point. Right now, we're giving direction to the town manager.
I'd also want it on a future agenda item.
You were not recognized. Future agenda items, did you want to put that on, Brenda?
Yeah, I really would, Mr. Mayor. I just think it's bad form not having the media in our town council meetings. I think it's pretty common for all the town councils to have press coverage.
The media is here. They're sitting in the back of the room. That does not preclude their attendance.
We're not talking about it. It's not on the agenda.
I was just talking about getting the table back.
I don't hear any seconds.
I do.
You too.
I do.
Doesn't get a third second.
No, I think Peggy gave me a second. I'm looking for a third, just to debate it, bring it onto a future agenda item.
Can I get a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm waiting to be recognized.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see it.
I would like a future agenda item to discuss staff and council raises and CPI adjustments agendas, so we can have a thorough discussion on that in a future meeting.
I'll second that. Nice try.
And since that one got two seconds, I'd also like another one about official policy about travel.
Second?
Travel.
Mr. Councilman Skillicorn, are you talking about travel expenses or just travel in general?
It would be travel expenses, but I don't mind having an open-ended agenda item.
Okay, so you have a first and a second. I'm sorry, you got a second and a third. So we'll put that on a future agenda item. Anything else? Can I get a motion and a second to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
So done.